Good evening and welcome to the 2021 New Canaan Candidates Debate for Board of Education. This is being moderated by the League of Women Voters of New Canaan, and we thank Town Hall for the debate space, and New Canaan Public Access Channel 79 for the live stream. You can watch tonight's program three ways: on Channel 79, on Channel 79's YouTube channel, and also on the League of Women Voters of New Canaan Facebook page. After tonight, a recording of this program will be available through Channel 79 and also through our website, l w v newcanon.org. A reminder that edited or partial usage of that recording is not permitted. So first, the upside: interest in municipal elections has gone way up across the nation, and that's a good thing. Municipal government affects our lives daily and directly: from potholes to parks to property taxes, and of course, our schools, the lifeblood of our town. The downside: Board of Education races all over have become fodder for police logs as well as comedy shows, but there's nothing funny about it. A strong democracy relies on a well-informed and constructively engaged electorate: well-informed by listening and learning from credible sources that are low on drama and high on substance, and that may not always tell us what we want or expect to hear; constructively engaged by voting in every election and by solving our problems together, often through compromise. Governance is problem-solving. It is hard work for the head and extremely hard work for the heart because it is a human process. We are people, not just platforms. The Nonpartisan League of Women Voters is here to cut through the noise as much as possible and share information with public purpose. Tonight, we thank you candidates for stepping forward to run and serve the public, and we urge those of you watching at home to please learn more about these and all the candidates running by consulting our Nonpartisan Voters Guide. A short version has been mailed to every household in New Canaan, but to access the full guide, go to our website, l w v newcanon.org, or go to vote411.org. This is the League's national site for one-stop voter education, no matter where you are in the country. Questions for tonight were solicited in advance from the public. We received a great many, and we screened them and often rewrote them for comprehensiveness, fairness, applicability to all the candidates in the race, and relevance to the office. Candidates have agreed in writing to detail debate rules, which include sticking to time limits, answering the question being asked, and more, and our moderator tonight will enforce those rules throughout. Finally, our moderator Laura Smith is president of the League of Women Voters of Connecticut. She served on the Weston Board of Education from 2001 to 2005, and as registrar of voters there from 2008 to 2016. She has worked on and moderated many election events and programs, and served as the state League's Voter Services Vice President from 2019 to 2021. Thank you very much Laura for being here. Welcome.
Thank you, Miki, and welcome to all the candidates. I guess we should get started, yes? Okay, timers, are we ready? We will go through the order of the seating, which has been drawn previous to this debate, and I will give you the question, and each one will get a chance to answer the question, as well as each one will get a rebuttal. Our first question, and we begin with seat number one, Jen Lattick. This first question goes to you.
Opening statements.
Oh, I'm sorry. Opening statements, thank you very much. It wasn't on my question. That's okay, my bad. Opening statements. You have one minute for your opening statement.
Hi, my name is Jen Lattick, and I just want to start off by saying thank you to the League of Women Voters and Channel 79 and to the New Canaanite for all being here, the League of Women Voters for organizing this event. Thank you so much. I have a professional background in education, extensive volunteer experience in the schools and the community, and a perspective as a parent, which I think all give me important skills to be an effective member of the Board of Education. Most importantly though, I think I have a track record of building consensus and bringing people together. I think we can all agree that New Canaan demands high-achieving schools, and that means excellence in academics, but it also means providing a safe learning environment for all students to feel a sense of belonging and support for their individual needs. We can expand our kids' knowledge and understanding of the world around them without erasing or excluding who they are, but we have to come together with trust, collaboration, and a focus on students, not political buzzwords.
Thank you, Ms. Niang.
Hi, thank you for having us this evening and giving us an opportunity to present our views to our community. My name is Fatun Niang, and I have raised two boys in the New Canaan school system that have given me a real experience with the school and the amazing education and skills that our schools provide. I'm running to keep the Board of Ed nonpartisan, continue our excellence in our schools, and maintaining our local control. I started a realty career with William Petrowitz International Realty, so I'm really the best person to talk about how important education and property values are to our community. I've always been devoted to my community and have continued to volunteer in many of our local organizations. Last year, or this past year rather, I joined the Board of the YMCA and the library. I also founded Star, a nonprofit organization after the peaceful protest in town.
Thank you, Ms. Fonz.
I thank you for the League of Women Voters for hosting this event, and for the opportunity to speak, and thank you to my fellow candidates. My name is Janet Fonz, and I've lived in New Canaan for 22 years. My husband Jack and I are proud parents of a college student and a high schooler. Having a New Canaan graduate who is immensely prepared for college, I understand academic excellence and what it takes to prepare our learners to be successful. I have experienced parenthood of children at all ages and can advocate for all age groups. I am a former West Elementary PTC president, and I have a degree in business management and held a career in banking and finance. I've held leadership roles at various local community organizations. I understand the importance of fiscal prudence and constantly evaluating if our tax dollars are being spent where they should, in the classroom. The skills required of our learners today are rapidly changing, and I want to ensure that they are prepared for the challenges and opportunities ahead of them. Children thrive best when they are supported, at school, at home, and in the community. With that as my guiding principle, I would love an opportunity to represent parents on the New Canaan Board of Education.
Thank you, Ms. Schwedell.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this debate, and to the other candidates as well. My name is Erica Schwedell, and I have a second grader and a fourth grader at West School, where I just recently completed a two-year term as the co-president during the pandemic. I also was a part of the team that fundraised and built the Outdoor Learning Center at the outdoor at the at West School. I also have professional experience in education, and the reasons I'm running for the Board of Education are: I want to keep partisan politics out of the Board of Education. I want to improve the Board's communication with both parents and the larger community. And I want to support continued local control of our schools so that we can remain flexible and nimble in our decision-making and do what's best for our New Canaan kids. Thank you.
Ms. Toll.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for having us here tonight. I'm Julie Toll. I have two children and three stepchildren, one of whom has special needs. One of my children is at West, and my daughter will join him there next year. Some of my past volunteer experience in town includes president of New Canaan Newcomers Club, and fundraising for the PATH at the Historical Society. I teach Sunday School at St. Mark's, and I'm a classroom coordinator at West. I'm a committed volunteer, and I'm committed to New Canaan. I'm running for the Board of Ed because I firmly believe in the importance of keeping decision-making local. Times are changing, and we are seeing external demands from Hartford, which the newly-elected members [inaudible] 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 Good evening and welcome to the 2021 New Canaan Candidates Debate for Board of Education. This is being moderated by the League of Women Voters of New Canaan, and we thank Town Hall for the debate space, and New Canaan Public Access Channel 79 for the live stream. You can watch tonight's program three ways: on Channel 79, on Channel 79's YouTube channel, and also on the League of Women Voters of New Canaan Facebook page. After tonight, a recording of this program will be available through Channel 79 and also through our website, l w v newcanon.org. A reminder that edited or partial usage of that recording is not permitted. So first, the upside: interest in municipal elections has gone way up across the nation, and that's a good thing. Municipal government affects our lives daily and directly: from potholes to parks to property taxes, and of course, our schools, the lifeblood of our town. The downside: Board of Education races all over have become fodder for police logs as well as comedy shows, but there's nothing funny about it. A strong democracy relies on a well-informed and constructively engaged electorate: well-informed by listening and learning from credible sources that are low on drama and high on substance, and that may not always tell us what we want or expect to hear; constructively engaged by voting in every election and by solving our problems together, often through compromise. Governance is problem-solving. It is hard work for the head and extremely hard work for the heart because it is a human process. We are people, not just platforms. The Nonpartisan League of Women Voters is here to cut through the noise as much as possible and share information with public purpose. Tonight, we thank you candidates for stepping forward to run and serve the public, and we urge those of you watching at home to please learn more about these and all the candidates running by consulting our Nonpartisan Voters Guide. A short version has been mailed to every household in New Canaan, but to access the full guide, go to our website, l w v newcanon.org, or go to vote411.org. This is the League's national site for one-stop voter education, no matter where you are in the country. Questions for tonight were solicited in advance from the public. We received a great many, and we screened them and often rewrote them for comprehensiveness, fairness, applicability to all the candidates in the race, and relevance to the office. Candidates have agreed in writing to detail debate rules, which include sticking to time limits, answering the question being asked, and more, and our moderator tonight will enforce those rules throughout. Finally, our moderator Laura Smith is president of the League of Women Voters of Connecticut. She served on the Weston Board of Education from 2001 to 2005, and as registrar of voters there from 2008 to 2016. She has worked on and moderated many election events and programs, and served as the state League's Voter Services Vice President from 2019 to 2021. Thank you very much Laura for being here. Welcome.
Thank you, Miki, and welcome to all the candidates. I guess we should get started, yes? Okay, timers, are we ready? We will go through the order of the seating, which has been drawn previous to this debate, and I will give you the question, and each one will get a chance to answer the question, as well as each one will get a rebuttal. Our first question, and we begin with seat number one, Jen Lattick. This first question goes to you.
Opening statements.
Oh, opening statements. Oh, I'm sorry. Opening statements, thank you very much. It wasn't on my question. That's okay, my bad. Opening statements. You have one minute for your opening statement.
Hi, my name is Jen Lattick, and I just want to start off by saying thank you to the League of Women Voters and Channel 79 and to the New Canaanite for all being here, the League of Women Voters for organizing this event. Thank you so much. I have a professional background in education, extensive volunteer experience in the schools and the community, and a perspective as a parent, which I think all give me important skills to be an effective member of the Board of Education. Most importantly though, I think I have a track record of building consensus and bringing people together. I think we can all agree that New Canaan demands high-achieving schools, and that means excellence in academics, but it also means providing a safe learning environment for all students to feel a sense of belonging and support for their individual needs. We can expand our kids' knowledge and understanding of the world around them without erasing or excluding who they are, but we have to come together with trust, collaboration, and a focus on students, not political buzzwords.
Thank you, Ms. Niang.
Hi, thank you for having us this evening and giving us an opportunity to present our views to our community. My name is Fatun Niang, and I have raised two boys in the New Canaan school system that have given me a real experience with the school and the amazing education and skills that our schools provide. I'm running to keep the Board of Ed nonpartisan, continue our excellence in our schools, and maintaining our local control. I started a realty career with William Petrowitz International Realty, so I'm really the best person to talk about how important education and property values are to our community. I've always been devoted to my community and have continued to volunteer in many of our local organizations. Last year, or this past year rather, I joined the Board of the YMCA and the library. I also founded STAR, a nonprofit organization, after the peaceful protest in town.
Thank you, Ms. Fonz.
I thank you for the League of Women Voters for hosting this event, and for the opportunity to speak, and thank you to my fellow candidates. My name is Janet Fonz, and I've lived in New Canaan for 22 years. My husband Jack and I are proud parents of a college student and a high schooler. Having a New Canaan graduate who is immensely prepared for college, I understand academic excellence and what it takes to prepare our learners to be successful. I have experienced parenthood of children at all ages and can advocate for all age groups. I am a former West Elementary PTC president, and I have a degree in business management and I and held a career in banking and finance. I've held leadership roles at various local community organizations. I understand the importance of fiscal prudence and constantly evaluating if our tax dollars are being spent where they should, in the classroom. The skills required of our learners today are rapidly changing, and I want to ensure that they are prepared for the challenges and opportunities ahead of them. Children thrive best when they are supported, at school, at home, and in the community. With that as my guiding principle, I would love an opportunity to represent parents on the New Canaan Board of Education.
Thank you, Ms. Schwedell.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this debate, and to the other candidates as well. My name is Erica Schwedell, and I have a second grader and a fourth grader at West School, where I just recently completed a two-year term as the co-president during the pandemic. I also was a part of the team that fundraised and built the Outdoor Learning Center at the outdoor at the at West School. I also have professional experience in education, and the reasons I'm running for the Board of Education are: I want to keep partisan politics out of the Board of Education. I want to improve the Board of the Board's communication with both parents and the larger community, and I want to support continued local control of our schools so that we can remain flexible and nimble in our decision-making and do what's best for our New Canaan kids. Thank you.
Ms. Toll.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for having us here tonight. I'm Julie Toll. I have two children and three stepchildren, one of whom has special needs. One of my children is at West, and my daughter will join him there next year. Some of my past volunteer experience in town includes president of New Canaan Newcomers Club, and fundraising for the PATH at the Historical Society. I teach Sunday School at St. Mark's, and I'm a classroom coordinator at West. I'm a committed volunteer, and I'm committed to New Canaan. I'm running for the Board of Ed because I firmly believe in the importance of keeping decision-making local. Times are changing, and we are seeing external demands from Hartford, which the newly-elected members
which the newly-elected members of the Board of Ed must be ready and willing to address. New Canaan has the best public school system in the state. We want to do the work to continue that record of success. Thank you.
Mr. Hogan.
Hi, I'm Phil Hogan. My wife, Malana, and I have lived in town almost six years now. My daughter Holly is a fifth grader at Saks. My son Casey is a third grader at South. My son Charlie is a first grader at South, and my son Kyle is doing a PG year at Playland Nursery School. Like many dads in town, I've coached softball, soccer, flag football, both rec and travel baseball. That's, that's kind of where my volunteer work has, has sort of transpired. I myself am a product of the public school system down in Scarsdale. I'm a proud Boston College graduate, and my professional background is in finance. I'm a regular parishioner at St. Aloysius, an avid squash and paddle tennis player, and a novice trail runner currently recovering from a torn hamstring. I'm running for the Board of Education because I'm a big believer in the public school mission, because I think we should always be iterating and looking for improvements, no matter how good the product is. And because I believe the best and most dynamic boards are full of independent free thinkers who have open minds and no agendas, and that's exactly what I am. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ration.
Hi. Thanks to the League of Women Voters for having us this evening. So I'm Penny Ration. I've been on the Board of Education for fourteen years, and I've served on many Board of Ed committees and on many building projects. My sons are both New Canaan Public School graduates. As I look here, there are a lot of new faces, so that what that means is we're going to have a lot of turnover in November. And I think if I'm reelected, that my experience and knowledge of the Board and its history will help on the new board. I remain fascinated and committed to the work that the Board of Education does in New Canaan. We are here to give the best possible world-class education to the students in New Canaan. And we have three important initiatives underway that I want to see through to fruition. The first is our Healthier School Start Times Initiative, which I want to make sure everyone knows it's going to start next fall, and elementary is at eight AM. Also, we started in response to feedback from alumni, a diversity, equity, and inclusion goal in the summer of two thousand and twenty. And because of COVID, we haven't been able to do that. So thank you. I look forward to working with, for the schools.
Mr. Bennett.
I want to thank the League of Women Voters and all the candidates for an opportunity for the community to hear from all of these candidates in a great forum. My name is Dan Bennett. I've lived in town for about seven and a half years with my wife Julie. We have three boys, a third grader and first grader at South School, and our youngest is at pre-K at toddler time where all of our boys went. Why did we move to New Canaan? It was for a great community and an excellent public school system. And like most of the people in town who moved here for similar reasons, that has been a great decision for my family. We love New Canaan and have been so pleased with the school system. New Canaan is blessed to have such a warm and welcoming community with so many parents who volunteer their time, energy, and expertise. I'm an active and engaged parent, looking to continue that sense of community and volunteer engagement by running for the Board. I want to bring more transparency, improved communication, and more community and parent engagement to the Board of Education. Thank you.
Mr. Alves.
Thanks to the league and the candidates this evening. My name is Hugo Alves. My wife, Marie, and I have lived in New Canaan for the last eleven years. We have three little girls, two at West and one at Playland Nursery. I am a product of the Connecticut Public School System. I was born in Portugal, grew up in Connecticut, graduated from UConn. My wife, also a product of Westchester School Systems. Our parents moved around to find the best school system they can afford, and that was top of our list, which is why we moved to New Canaan when we did. I sit on the Board of Governors for the New Canaan Historical Society. That's my top role for design, in case anybody doesn't know. And I'm an advocate for my industry. I go to DC a few times a year as a liaison to the community and the financial planning community and our representatives. I'm a financial planner when I'm in my free time, and I help people achieve their objectives by understanding their objectives, laying out a plan to achieve those objectives, and helping them execute, literally helping people achieve the best possible outcomes. And that's what I plan on doing as the bridge between the community and our administration to continue on the excellence of our schools.
Thank you. And last but not least, Ms. Willet.
Hi. Thanks to the League of Women Voters for having us tonight. My name is Karen Willet. I've lived in New Canaan for about eight years. I have two boys who are ten and fifteen. I'm running for the Board of Ed this year for a couple of reasons. One is I think experience matters, especially this year, when up to seven of the nine Board members will be new to the Board. I have been deeply involved in the school, most recently as a co-president of the PTC at West. And I've also attended nearly every BOE meeting, curriculum overview, budget hearing for the last four or five years. So I have a really good understanding of how our district operates, and I think that background and context are really important. Second, I also think a nonpartisan Board is absolutely critical to continue to put kids first and get things done. I attended several meetings before I even knew that there were Republicans and Democrats on the Board, and I hope to see that continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll begin with the questions. Question one, we'll go to Ms. Lattic, and we will go down the row, and then we'll mix it up a little bit. School start times was a key issue during the last BOE election in twenty nineteen. Over the last four years, parents, students, and staff were surveyed multiple times on the topic. All town bodies have approved funding for the proposed changes, which then survived a town-wide referendum this past string. If elected, please explain why you would or would not support the BOE's decision to roll out the current school start time plan in September twenty twenty-two.
So this is a really hard question because no matter how I answer it, it's going to make somebody unhappy. But I agree the decision to change the start times to better align with what has been learned about sleep through scientific research was not, it's not new, and it was not rushed. And even after years of discussion and planning, a referendum vote gave people a chance to weigh in once again, and the result was not even close. So I have consistently heard that the other slate is telling parents of young children that there is a two-tiered option out there that's being kept from them, and I think that's really dangerous. That two-tier option is not an option. It was looked at logistically. It doesn't work. It can't happen. So instead of misleading people, I think we need to listen to the parents who are telling us that these changes are a burden and get to the hard work of expanding real before-and-after-school care options for families and do the hard work that it takes to implement this in the best way that we can. So I do support continuing with the implementation of the healthier start, sleep, school start times.
Ms. Niang.
Thank you. I do support the implementation of the school, the new school start time because I think it took four years of conversation, research, studies, both, looking at both the impact on the kids and the logistical needs for our district to be able to do it in the, the best way that works for our students. Now that it has been voted by the current Board of Ed, I think the role of the upcoming Board of Ed will be to make sure that the implementation of the new healthy start time is done at a minimal impact for the families. What does that mean? It's mean we also have to look at all the childcare challenges that that will raise, and as a community, how we provide those. And we can all lean on, lean on the, the town. And also, I understand that the implementation committee, committee is also looking at different vendors to be able to provide that service. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fonz.
Yes, I do support the Board of Education's decision to move forward with the healthier start times. Health and wellness is, should be always at the forefront of making decisions on the Board of Ed. And the science proves that older kids need more sleep, and the younger kids are more capable of going to school earlier. That said, the implementation is, we have to recognize is, it's going to be hard on some of the, the younger kids. And right now, we have to focus on making sure that childcare is, is being provided for and that all the other issues are, are looked at as well. And we need, we need to speak to the parents and through the implementation committee, find out what those concerns are and address those concerns appropriately.
Thank you. Ms. Schwedell.
Yes, so I also support moving forward with the new school start times. I think it has been a challenging process, and it is a situation where there are going to be families that are going to struggle with moving to the new start times. I think it's important to move forward, but as we move into the implementation phase, I think we need to figure out how to make this solution work for all families. Or, you know, as many families as we can, the change will be hard. But the wraparound services that, that the district is currently looking into to provide both before, before-school and after-school, school care will be very important. I think we need to have a bigger conversation with all different types of families, you know, not just K-12, but also preschool families, to make sure that they are a part of this implementation. And we need to be doing a better job of communicating with all of the impacted stakeholders for this, this decision.
Thank you. Ms. Toll.
So I mentioned earlier, I have two young kids, ages four and six. I also have three older stepchildren. They're seventeen, twenty-one, and twenty-three. So I've watched them go through middle school, high school, and I can see all sides of the argument here. I didn't really have a pick one way or the other. But looking back at the process, I do feel that the process itself could have been better. Communication could have been better. I think we could have avoided a referendum if we had the referendum which divided our community, if we had better communication. Looking forward, we need to make sure we are active and engaged with the implementation and make sure that it's a smooth transition.
Okay, Mr. Hogan.
Yeah, I mean, I, I support the new start time initiative, but I, I think it's important that we not pretend that this was some sort of well-run process. It wasn't. Half the town is still up in arms about this. Look, at the end of the day, a group of parents with older kids went out and did some research, got the administration's ear, and set out to make some changes. And there's nothing wrong with that whatsoever. I think where the process went off the rails is that they, this group sort of undercommunicated with certain kind of parent groups in town. A number of people felt like, kind of disenfranchised, and, and people who had a different view from the prevailing view were, were attacked, sometimes personally. The real shame is that I think these start time proponents would have gotten the exact same result had they been transparent from the very beginning, which is a shame. You know, as a South School parent, I never really had a dog in the fight, I have to say. But I'm sympathetic to the elementary school parents who, who felt like they were boxed out of the process and never really had their voices heard. What I can promise is that a process like this will never happen again, as long as I'm on the Board. And if I'm implementing these changes next year, I'll keep these elementary school parents at West and East at the absolute forefront of my mind.
Thank you. Ms. Ration.
I think, as I said in my opening statement, I support the new healthier school start times. We've been through a four-year process, and it's been controversial, and people have lots of different opinions. People at the high school, the teachers, the parents. We've solicited all types of input from everybody. You can always get more input. Communications can sometimes be better, but I feel like we've done a thorough job assessing the community. I think that we have talked to the experts in the field. We've talked to school districts that have made this change and find out how it went for them. And I will tell you, every school district that's changed, it's been controversial. The new school start times better align with how students learn. And that, to me, was the guiding principle in whether or not I was going to vote for these new start, start times or not. We've also instructed the administration to compress the times for the bus runs as much as possible. And in doing that, we've been able to get elementary to eight AM, which we all on the Board thought was important. We have high school at eight thirty, and we have grades five and six at nine fifteen, hoping to move it closer to nine o'clock. We will work in implementation to make everything as smooth as possible. There's a whole ecosystem of organizations and activities that support the current school start times. And we're going to talk to all those organizations and have them shift so that in the fall, when we start these times, it will be hopefully seamless. So thank you for giving us your input, the entire community, those with whom we agreed and those with whom the decision disagreed on this important issue.
Mr. Bennett.
The court, the, the current Board decided that the school start times will be implemented at the beginning of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, and I'm supportive of that. The focus of the Board and the administration now has, has to pivot to a seamless implementation of that. And that needs to be very well-managed, and it needs to incorporate views of all the stakeholders in the community, and especially parents that still have concerns that they don't think have been adequately addressed. While not everyone agrees about the outcome of the decision, and while everyone doesn't even agree that the process was poor, many in our community do feel that it was, that it was a flawed process, that they weren't heard, that their concerns weren't addressed. Even if they had an ability to say what their concerns were, they didn't feel like they had people that responded to them and their concerns substantively and explained their rationale sufficiently. I think that on the Board, if we bring better communication, more parental engagement, more coordination with parents and other stakeholders in the, in the community, we can have a really good implementation of this. But it's going to take a lot of work, a lot of improved communication, and it's going to have to be a forum where you can really engage on valid concerns parents have. And I'm willing to bring that to the table if I'm on the Board.
Thank you, Mr. Alves.
So a lot of, a lot of my thoughts have already been shared. I, I personally, as I went through the process, I was a little bit late to the game, like a lot of the younger parents. So I was one of the younger parents with kids a little bit later in the school, in the school system that heard about it late. Was it my own fault, potentially, for not getting more involved early on? Now I'm involved. And in learning through, and going through the process, listening to the community, to Dan's point and, and Phil's, a lot of folks just didn't feel like they were included. I think we need to do a better job of proactively engaging really busy, really young parents so that they feel like they have a seat at the table, too. I support the new start times. They're passed by the Board of Ed. I was happy to see Dr. Lutzey was able to get it from seven forty-five to eight. I initially thought, I remember when my daughters went to school for the first time, I thought, nine oh five seems pretty late. And, and at seven forty-five, it sounded kind of early. But, but like Julie, I wasn't, you know, it didn't feel terribly strongly on either side. But on my street, I've got a lot of neighbors that have kids of all ages, and to this day, I'm still canvassing the neighborhood and finding out how people feel, what they think, what their thoughts are, so that we can make sure that we don't make those same missteps again. And no decision like this, which is an important one, backed by, by good data, takes four years and upsets this many of our community members.
Thank you, Ms. Willet.
Okay, so this is really tough for me to get into ninety seconds because I've observed every aspect of this process for five years. And actually, I wasn't a parent of older kids when I first started talking about this. I had a preschooler at Playland, and I had a third grader. So I know a lot about this, so I'm going to try to just say what I think in ninety seconds. Obviously, I do support the change. I'm really happy that it's now eight o'clock. I was dismayed when the first option came out that said seven forty-five. It's early, and also I knew that it would cause a huge backlash. So I'm really happy about the eight o'clock. But however, and I also agree with many parents that the communications about this process were not ideal. I felt that frustration many times myself along that five years. And I have a lot of ideas about how to improve communications as a result of this process. But however one feels about the how, the schedule that they came out with after many, many iterations is really, if you think about putting kids first, the absolute best solution. So like so many other candidates, I think now we need to focus on that implementation committee and make sure that we do this the New Canaan way, which is to say flawlessly, and address particularly the issue of quality, affordable childcare that has come up many times and really has bubbled up as a, to the surface as a result of this conversation, which I hope to be sort of, as a working parent myself, I hope to be a little bit of a silver lining. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebutts. Thirty-second rebuttals. Does Ms. Ha, Ms. Lattic? Ms. Niang.
What I want to say, I, I heard the comment here, and I think that we do have a consensus on all agreeing with the school start time. And the good thing here is that the communication is not, the conversation is not over. Now we have an implementation committee, and it's composed of administrators, school reps. So all parents have an opportunity to raise their voice at their school and let that person bring the conversation to the administration. Let's keep talking as a community to get to a flawless implementation.
Thank you, Ms. Fonz. Anything? Ms. Schwedell? Ms. Toll?
Yes. Jen, I want to thank you for bringing up the two-tiered system. That is something none of us have ever said. Hugo, Phil, Dan, and I have been in sync as a team from May. We've never brought up a two-tiered system. And we've also heard, and I just want to clear up this misinformation. We have no intention of rolling back the start times. That's been decided by our current Board, and we're moving forward with that. And I just want to make that clear because a few people have asked us or said they've heard that we're rolling back start times. We are not rolling back start times, and we were, we are not talking about a two-tiered system. Thank you.
Mr. Hogan. Nope. Nothing. Ms. Ration.
Well, first, I'm just delighted everybody's for the new school start times. That is where I, I hope the Board will go. And with respect to communications, communications can always be better. I'm looking forward to hearing everybody's ideas on communications. And I just also want to remind the community that we were doing this, and we did not drop the ball and stop it during COVID. So we were dealing with a lot of other things. That's not to say we shouldn't do better in everything that we try, but I'm appreciative of the support for the new school start times tonight.
Mr. Bennett.
No, thank you.
Mr. Alves.
I'm just pumped. We're off to such a great start tonight.
Ms. Willet.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. We're going to be moving on to the second question. This question will go to Ms. Fonz first. To what degree should parents and/or their representatives on the BOE get involved in specific curriculum decisions, such as what books are available in the library in the classroom, and what topic discussions are held in class, or what descriptive words are used in class discussion?
Well, I believe that parent feedback and communication is, it's extremely important. I mean, I believe that, we know that more than anyone else, being actively involved in our boards, our school boards, and being PTC presidents, we know parent communication is, is most important. That said, I believe that the Curriculum Leadership Council is, is the authority that does all the work. They, they're professionals, and they, they should not be, there shouldn't be any, any blowback from what the work that they do. That's really important. I do believe that there's room for more communication in terms of a subcommittee that could be formed to review and vet some of the things that are, that do come down from the CLC. So I do believe that there is room for that. So, I do believe that there is room for that. Other than that, I, I think that parents all the time should give feedback with curriculum and they can do that through their teachers. They can do that with the, the principal and they can do that through department heads. So, I strongly believe in that.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Swidell, same question for you.
So, I believe that parents should be involved in the curriculum process through their Board of Ed members. That is the current system and I do not see enough evidence right now that that system is not working in order to call for large-scale changes to it. I do think that we should monitor and we should get feedback, as always, from our parent community to understand if there are concerns. And if there are concerns, then we should look into it more deeply. But right now, the CLC, the Curriculum Leadership Committee is doing, or sorry, Council, is doing a fantastic job and has for the last 20 years, as evidenced by our students' results, our test scores, the colleges that they go to. And I would look for more evidence that that system is not working before I would make dramatic changes to it.
Thank you. Ms. Toll?
We have been clear that we want the administration and the CLC to draft the curriculum. They're the experts and they do a great job. What we want is more curriculum oversight. We want transparency and communication in the way of public meetings that will help parents and the community better understand what's being approved. We want parents to be able to ask questions and get answers. Darien just unanimously passed approval for a curriculum committee. We used to have a curriculum committee here in New Canaan. This is nothing groundbreaking. We just want transparency and communication so parents have a seat at the table to see what their children are learning.
Thank you. Mr. Hogan?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we've been advocating for a curriculum committee with some BOE involvement for some time now. Like Julie said, the board used to have an active and engaged one and, and at that time, the results were terrific. A few years ago, they decided to cede that authority to the CLC. I, I believe it was because board members didn't feel like they had sort of expertise on curriculum-related matters, which is totally fine. I don't have expertise on that either. The question is, do you need that expertise to have an opinion on curriculum? And in my view, the answer is probably no. I've said it before and I'll say it again, I have zero interest in writing curriculum. I, I wouldn't even know where to begin with that process and I'm grateful for Dr. Lutzey and all our current CLC members for their years of curriculum-related service to our schools. But I do have expertise when it comes to my own children and I think we will get the best results when there's an effective collaboration between parents, the BOE and the administration. This is about working together to achieve the best outcomes for our kids. I think it's hard to be against that type of change. Obviously, Darien agrees, like Julie said, their board just unanimously approved the curriculum committee. I think we ought to do the same and I think we ought to do it as soon as possible.
Thank you. Ms. Ration?
So, first of all, I actually don't think that Board of Ed members should get involved in the detail about what books are in the library or in the classroom, or even unless there's something terribly wrong, exactly how the lesson plans look. You know, we have a Curriculum Leadership Council, which has done a fabulous job. They take the state standards and then they use their collective, over 500 years of experience in, in education and craft a New Canaan-specific curriculum. And it has served our students incredibly well. We, on the Board of Ed, get numerous, numerous curriculum presentations and we particularly get them when we're doing a new initiative. I, I sat on a committee that was looking at whether or not we were going to go one-to-one with technology at the high school. And so, when there, I've heard numerous, whenever there's a change, we get numerous presentations, as we have had on health. When they redid the science, we've had numerous presentations on the new science curriculums and on the social studies. You can go to the Board of Ed website and look at it. I also think parents get a lot of information and understand what's being taught in, from Schoolology, Google Classrooms and CSaw. So, I think actually there is a lot of oversight by the Board of Ed. I have to say, until this election, I don't, I can't recall an email I ever had from any parent over 14 years complaining about a lesson in a particular classroom in our school system. And I think that's telling as to how good our curriculum is.
Thank you. Mr. Bennett?
So, I think that the board should get involved in anything that parents, community members or taxpayers are concerned about or care about related to their schools. The board is the elected representatives of these community members and we've talked to a lot of people in the community and they have concerns. Now, we're not saying that their, that all of their concerns are happening in New Canaan schools, but we're saying the board needs to be able to address them. We think the board should have active and engaged oversight of curriculum. We want to implement a curriculum committee, as Phil and Julie indicated. We've been clear on this since early June. This would require public meetings, public notice and better transparency in, in communication to parents in the community. We think that's all good things. The Curriculum Leadership Council does an excellent job and will continue to do their excellent work in crafting curricula for the district. They draft the curriculum, but the committee would allow parents, community members, as well as board members, more time, more active oversight, more meetings to engage as curriculum is drafted, and we think that that level of transparency, sunshine and engagement improves the overall process. Even if you end up with the exact same outcome, the exact same curriculum, if you have more discussion, more explanation and rationale, it will help people get behind the decisions. Thank you.
Mr. Alves?
Yeah, so one of the, one of the more impressive things I've seen at a, at a board meeting was just a few weeks ago when we got that peer view into the CLC and we saw the 27 members and the 512 years of experience. It was impressive. And they're there for a reason. We hired all the right people. We do rely on the experts, but to Phil's point, we're all in this together in raising and educating our kids because we give our kids to the school for six to eight hours a day and then there's after-school, sometimes there's before-school. I think it's important for parents to feel like they are engaged, that they're part of the process. I'll, you know, I'll use an immigrant analogy here. My wife and I and our family make sausage every year and, and we hang it up and we cure it and then we serve it. I think that, you know, use the secret sauce analogy, some people just might want to know what some of the, some of the recipe is. So, maybe before we cure the sausage, we can take a look at it with the parents and some of our elected officials because I feel like that's ultimately why the board is here, is to help make decisions based on how the community feels. I also, I, you know, we've brought this up before, I do fear what's coming down from Hartford at some point. Doesn't seem like it's here yet in New Canaan. We've done a really nice job of developing our own curriculum, but who knows what is now a suggestion or an option suddenly becomes a mandate? And how do we become clear in what the objective is and how are we going to put that forth towards, towards education in our community and make sure that parents, again, feel like they have a seat at the table? It isn't about control, it's just really knowing, understanding and having a voice.
Thank you. Ms. Willet?
So, I, I think that this is a complicated question about curriculum and I, I think that we've been talking about the technical question of whether there should be another curriculum committee or whether BOE members should sit on the Curriculum Leadership Council. I absolutely agree that the BOE does represent parents and should know the curriculum and that's how it works today, just not with a separate committee. It's the whole board is sort of the committee. But really, why is the question? Why does this Republican slate feel at this time that this is important? And I would say that based on their caucus speeches as a guide, it's to be sure no one is sort of sneaking in, you know, indoctrinating type of curriculum or teaching anyone to hate America. So, I just want to take it back to, you know, sort of the reason that this discussion began in the first place. And are those risks really worth disrupting this 20-year process that has given us this kind of amazing curriculum that we have right now? So, really, I think, you know, we can talk, we can argue about whether there should be a separate committee or not and I don't disagree with that. I think, you know, having BOE members on the council would probably change it a little bit, but it wouldn't reveal anything nefarious. If anything, it would make people even more impressed with how we do things here. But I think the bigger picture is what message does this sort of distrust and this talk of more oversight and is it warranted here? Did they, you know, is there some reason that we're talking about this? And what message does this kind of thing send to our leadership in, of our schools?
Thank you. Ms. Lattick?
Excuse me. Yes, I feel our Curriculum Leadership Council is outstanding. I think it is one of the best things that we have in our school system. Just look at our student outcomes and our district rankings and just talking to my kids who have grown up learning this curriculum. I think we should be proud and not suspicious. And I think that it is hard to have this conversation when everything shifts so much, but I'm with Karen. I feel like we got a real glimpse into what's behind the worries about the curriculum and the curriculum committee or the Curriculum Leadership Council. I think communication with parents is key and I think we do a really fantastic job at inviting parents to come in and see. I think that they're, spend time in the classrooms, you go to back-to-school night, you can call your principal, you can, there are so many, the website is full of so much information. I have never once felt like I didn't know what my kids were learning and where that learning was coming from. So, I guess I'm not against a curriculum committee, but I don't see how that does anything except for add an additional meeting in which curriculum is presented to then again be presented to the entire board. I feel like it's much more a signal word to people that we're going to be watching out and you don't need to be scared of our teachers indoctrinating our youth because that's the language that's out there around this. What's most important to me is that the curriculum is designed and written by experts and we can't allow that standard to be tampered with or watered down.
Thank you. Ms. Niang?
Well, I have to say, we are very fortunate, fortunate in New Canaan to be, to have an extremely experienced and competent, competent CLC. They not only create our curriculum, but they tailor it to our town based on the, the standard set by the state. And there's nothing wrong with the state setting a standard as long as you apply it to the way that benefits the kids in town. The standards have always been here and always been very high. And I'm going to piggyback on what was said earlier that we used to have a curriculum committee in town and things were excellent. Well, we don't, we haven't had it for many, many years and we are number one in the, in the state. We are number 26 in the country. So, I think that's just telling us the redundancy of that community and maybe why. I can project in the past, but that's telling me that maybe why at some point it was not needed. Also, the board have been proactive in how we respond to challenges that are actually existing. We don't, we cannot anticipate every single thing. We cannot start worrying about the what-if, what-if Hartford does it, what-if Hartford does that? Because if we do that, we are functioning from a place of fear and we cannot let that be part of the Board of Ed. I think collaborative work with the administration, with each other and bringing up the concern of the community is what we should focus on.
Okay, thank you. We'll start with rebuttals. Ms. Fonz, rebuttal?
Yes, I have a question. Are the, the Republican slate, are you advocating for parents on the CLC? Do you want the parents involved?
No, we're not, we don't.
Okay, we don't, not a question.
No questions to each candidate, sorry.
Right, so, I just wanted to clarify that, you know, the CLC is, that needs to be separate. That's something that we believe has academic integrity and if you mess with that, then the whole school sys, the whole integrity falls apart. So, we want to make that clear.
Thank you. Rebuttal, Ms. Swidell?
Yes. So, I just wanted to respond to something that Hugo said around things coming from Hartford because I have a lot of faith in New Canaan and New Canaan's process. I think it's served us very well and there are always going to be things coming. And I would say, let's wait and let's watch what happens in, at the legislative sessions. And if something is coming to New Canaan, we can respond to it. But I wouldn't proactively change our process that we know is working and serving us well because of something that might happen.
Thank you. Ms. Toll?
Yes. Karen, I just want to mention, when we say more oversight, we're not mentioning that that's distrust. What we've heard from the community is that they want a curriculum committee like Walton has, like New Haven has, like Westport has, and now like Darien has. And Jen, it's not a signal we are watching. People just want to be involved with their kids' education. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hogan?
Sure. Yeah, I would, I would counter a bunch, a bunch of voices on this one. I, I would also say that it's not about distrust. We know these CLC people are really good people. They're professionals, they're wonderful, they've done a great job. But what we hear from parents a lot, we've heard from probably one or two parents pretty much every day, just talking about what they think is inappropriate, how, how they're not sure where to go, they don't know whether they could go to the teacher, they don't know whether they could approach the board. So, these are, these are helpless parents. They really feel hamstrung by the situation. They fear retribution to themselves, they fear retribution to their kids and, and the board's job is to alleviate some of that, I think.
Ms. Ration?
Well, honestly, I think the first thing you should tell them is that there's no, there's no retribution. If you have an issue with the board, please like email me, email the board, call the superintendent. We want to hear from you. But, I mean, I think what you have to do is you have to look at who are we turning out? And we're turning out amazingly well-educated young men and women. And what I like, we could go over the stats, Erica did, but one of the things that really is reassuring to me and from when I've been door knocking is I ask parents, I say, how did your kids do when they went to college? Were they ready? Could they handle it? And to a person, they all said that they could. And that, to me, is the proof of the pudding.
Mr. Bennett?
So, a couple of things to clarify. We aren't asking for parents to be on the CLC. We aren't even asking for board members to be on the CLC. We're asking for a curriculum committee that'll have a subset of board members and a handful of administrators, presumably a few that are on the CLC, to more robustly discuss curriculum. So, that hopefully that clears that up for everyone. I would like to echo some of the other comments, though. Our views are coming from parents. Parents have concerns, they want the board to address them and they don't always feel comfortable raising them and we want to give them that forum.
Mr. Alves?
Yeah, the suspicion thing is, is an interesting point. I, I don't, the only thing that'd make me suspicious is, is battling one, battling or the, the notion that having more transparency is in some way radical. That would give me suspicion. I haven't been suspicious up until this point. And agree with Dan, I was going to say that if he didn't, we're not looking for parents or any board members to be on the CLC. Those are the experts. It's our job to hire those people. But the Board of Ed, they, they do, in fact, it was my understanding, the administration does report to the Board of Ed. So, you know, them feeling like we don't trust them, I'm not sure if that's, that's true.
Ms. Willet?
Sure. I think at this point, we probably need a curriculum committee. I think Dr. Lutzey and Dr. Corenti would probably welcome it to have that peace of mind versus sort of swirling questions about it. And also just would say that the Republican slate has repeated over and over that they don't think anything's wrong with the curriculum today and three of them, two or three of them just said the opposite about what they're hearing in the community.
Thank you. Ms. Lattick?
Yeah, I feel the same way. It's like everything that you started your campaign with and everything that you said in the ensuing weeks and now all of a sudden, it's totally different. So, I'm sure to some people watching, we look a little bit crazy when we say that they've, there have been signals and a lot of suspicion, but those are words that were used about Hartford coming for us and coming for our kids and about our American values being erased day by day. Those are the types of words that make people who are working in our schools feel like people are suspicious of them and coming after them. And we've seen that in Darien. They are in that exact situation.
Thank you. Ms. Niang?
And to piggyback on the Darien and the Westport, Darien, yes, did vote for CLC, but may I remind you, there is no parents involved in that, that group, for curriculum committee, but there's no parents involved in there. It's all teachers. So, one, one, I can't remember which one of you did mention books, but for me, having a curriculum to start looking at what books can be taught, what books cannot be taught, it's looking backward and we want to move New Canaan forward. And I don't think opinions of parents should be involved in the education of the kids.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to question three and we will start with Ms. Toll.
Yes.
"New Canaan's number one school ranking in Connecticut comes at a price. Taxpayers want top schools, but also expect our town government to manage costs well. Please describe a specific area in the BOE budget where you might increase or decrease spending and why?
Look, we have a $90 million budget for our schools and that is a lot of money, that's a lot of responsibility. Schools are a huge asset in our town and one that needs to be invested in. We will fully fund our schools, we need to spend efficiently, and we owe it to all members of our community to ensure dollars are spent wisely. I think the current board has done a great job bringing in outside consultants and creatively spending money and I think we continue to look at ways to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan.
Yeah, first, I think we've got to give a lot of credit to the existing board for keeping the budget flat the last couple of years during very difficult circumstances. So that was a Herculean effort, so bravo to Penny, bravo to, to everyone who's on the board. My biggest priority as a board member would be to make sure that each and every last dollar makes its way to the classroom. That's, I think, where it does the most good. I did recently hear that the administrative offices are going to move to a new location that doesn't require us to spend hundreds of thousands of, of dollars in rent every year. I had mentioned that actually in the debate leading up to the caucus and that result feels like a pretty, a pretty big win for New Canaan taxpayers. Beyond that, I, I would just say that the board probably needs more time to review specific budgetary items. Neighboring towns spend a lot of time on their budgets, many of them go through the budgets on a line item basis, which feels like the responsible way to do business. And I think in the interest of transparency and kind of given the strain that COVID has put on, on so many working families and senior citizens in town, we sort of owe it to them to make sure that every dollar is spent as, as efficiently as possible.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ration.
So I think actually we've done a really good job with the budget at the Board of Ed. If you look at the rate over the past 10 years, it's compounded at about 1.9%. And we have found recently great savings in health insurance, in sourcing, printing, maintenance, and joint purchasing, and energy among others. This coming year, we're going to have, we're going to go out to bid for solar at the high school because we have a new roof and we're looking at a CHP project at the high school as well. If you look how New Canaan ranks in terms of its cost, we are about, there, in our DRG, we pay less than seven other comparable districts, including one very popular district to the south, I would say. So I think we're doing well in terms of, of comparison. You always try and do better. And in terms of transparency of our budget, it's a line item, line item, open budget. I mean, you ask a question and Dr. Keating, Dr. Lettsi have the answer. There are no hidden agendas in that budget, everybody knows what it is. Do you have one favorite area that I actually try and add to in the budget sometime, some years? And I would probably put just a little more money to our guidance counselors so they can spend more time going out to the schools and universities selling our amazing graduates. But that's a small item.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
So we have best-in-class schools, it's why people live here, it's why people want to send their kids to school here, it's why people move here and they want, we are delivering an elite education for our kids. But with a $90 million budget, 90 million plus, people, especially taxpayers, want to know that dollars are being spent efficiently, effectively, and targeted towards improving educational outcomes. That's what I want to focus on if I'm on the board. I think that's what the board does a good job of focusing on currently, but it's always important to be vigilant. I would agree with Phil's comment on the process. I think there are other towns that spend more time on the budget, have more meetings, have board members, have access to the materials earlier often and it takes longer to go through. And I think that that's actually, would be an improved, robust process around both transparency as well as communication to the community. I don't know that it actually changes the outcome. Hopefully in a 90-plus million dollar budget, there's room for, you know, efficiencies and improvements and I think, you know, the board can get in there and do that work. But I would say, you know, we want to invest in our kids, it's important, but we also want to invest in our amazing teachers and our excellent administrators. I think that that is what drives these outcomes for our children and we need to be thoughtful about balancing concerns from the taxpayers as well as investing in the biggest asset in this town, our public school system.
Thank you, Mr. Alves.
Yeah, the budget's obviously, it's an important thing for everybody, it's, it's part of what I do on a daily basis as a financial planner, is help clients budget for starting with their primary objectives, looking at their current balance sheet, looking at their cash flow and finding out what's the priority, how do, and how we get from point A to point B as efficiently and as effectively as possible. It's 70%, almost 70% of our town's budget, I think it's closer to $102 million a year. The stats that I'd seen over the last 20 years, or at least from 2001 to 2019, is that our budget went up 4.2% when average inflation was closer to 1.2%. I know that we've reined that in over the last three years. I don't think the school budget's been flat, I think the town budget's been flat, which has been really great. I do understand, and I, from what I understand, Dr. Lettsi has put together a pretty stellar team with his own CFO and they're doing a really, really nice job. I just want to make sure that going forward, particularly with higher pressure from national higher taxes, likely local higher taxes, at least in the state level, that every dollar that we put to work is a worthy investment where we can, we can not only identify, but we can get in the biggest bank, biggest, biggest bang for our buck.
Thank you, Ms. Willet.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Sure. New Canaan's number one school ranking in Connecticut comes at a price. Taxpayers want top schools, but also expect our town government to manage costs well. Please describe a specific area in the BOE budget where you might increase or decrease spending and why?
Good question. So, you know, I've watched four or five budget cycles, they're lengthy, they start in November and they don't end until April. And our Board of Finance puts a lot of pressure on our Board of Education and our Superintendent about the budget, which I think is a good thing. I, I think if I'm on the board, it's going to be very uncomfortable to be in that hot seat when, at the Board of Finance meetings, but I think it's a great way to be sure that, you know, Dr. Lettsi can defend every single dollar that he's asking for. What would I spend more and less on? I'm really excited about the STEM initiatives. I think the Innovation Center is, I think we're a little bit behind on that and I really would like to accelerate that. And I also think, you know, each summer when we, when we create the budget goals, and a lot of this does happen, I mean, sorry, not the budget goals, the, the district goals, we should be thinking big about what are the new innovative things we should be doing, but we should also, and those are the things that we should invest in, but in terms of like what I would spend less on, are we also looking at things that we don't need to do anymore? So is there a way to shift around resources so that every new initiative is not net new to the budget?
Thank you. Ms. Lattick.
I always start out my thought process around the budget, reminding myself that when you look at our district reference groups, so schools that look like ours, we are always number one in outcomes and always seven or eight out of nine or 10 or whatever it is in terms of spending. So I think you hear the number, it's, it's sticker shock, it's, it's a big number, but that's how much it costs to run a school district like the one that we have. That said, it is an enormous part of our town's budget each year, so it's important that it's constantly combed through extensively in search of savings. I, I don't agree with you, Phil, I sometimes wonder if we live in the same town, I feel like there's a very long process and many meetings and it's a huge job going through the budget. It's extremely organized when you go on the website just as a regular person to look at what those line items are. I favor innovative ideas such as bringing repairs in-house, which has saved us huge amounts of money since that change was recently implemented. And I also think that you save money in places like union contracts and insurance plans and we're a leader in those areas too. But it, you have to be really smart and creative when you're looking at the budget and make sure that there aren't cuts that are digging into student programming, but it sounds like we're all in agreement, so that's nice.
Thank you, Ms. Niang.
Well, Jen has covered a lot of the points I wanted to make regarding the budget, but I would say that we are at this time investing in our kids. Living in New Canaan comes at a premium and that premium is always worth it because we see it in not only the excellence of our education, but in our property values. And come, we have an administration right now that is not even mandated to do a line item budget, but they show transparency by doing it. So anyone who wants to know where is the money going, what has been spent, can find all that information in line and it's not hidden, it's not 10 clicks, it's two or three max. So I think it's important to, to, when we talk about budget, to see what are we talking about, where do we want to cut and at what cost? What cutting, what are we talking about, cutting salaries? Are we talking about reducing our teachers and how, we got to think about how that impacts the quality of education we are offering to our town. We are starting some innovating process through our technology, the STEM program, and we have expanded our AP offering. All that's cost money and that's why we, we are where we are. And I think it's important not to come and assume that because it's a total budget of 94 million, that it is just money spent, nearly willing, because the, the extra is also returned to the town every year.
Thank you, Ms. Fonz.
I'm also in agreement with Jen that I am completely confused why everyone thinks there's no tran, or certain people think there's no transparency in the budget. The budget's 142 pages, it goes through a long process of going through all the town bodies. The budget is by school district, it's by school, it's by cost center. There is extreme amount of transparency in the budget. That said, there, we need to think of it as an investment, as Jen said, and, and it's more of an investment rather than expense and this is what drives New Canaan real estate The theory is that we can find savings are the areas that have been, we've been continued to, to find savings in the, the co-insurance program, the stop-loss limits that we have. Those are significant areas where we have saved. The cost-sharing program, I think the teachers contribute 21% now to their, to the health, to their health plans, that's, that's extreme amount of savings. So there is certain areas where we, I do think that we can invest more and that's in the STEM programs and foreign languages is an important part. We, we need to think of the, the areas where we need to invest in what our kids need to be successful in the future and those are the core areas I think that we can invest in.
Thank you. Ms. Schwedel.
So I agree that the number is very big when you look at the school budget, but again, this, you know, investing in our children is the primary asset that New Canaan has. Just to clarify, the Board of Education budget has not grown adjusted for inflation in the last 10 years and I think that is phenomenal. But to answer your question around how to potentially reduce, you know, or, or add to the costs, I don't have a specific answer on what we should reduce, but I do think that we could possibly look at other districts, we, you know, other districts come to us and they learn from us. They learn from us in terms of how we do our academics. Well, maybe we have something to learn from them. And so I would be very interested from a process perspective of looking at other districts and understanding not just at the highest level, but at cost center level, down to the maintenance level and seeing how do we compare with other districts and is there a way that we might be able to further reduce our costs?
Okay, thank you. Now we'll start with rebuttals. Ms. Toll, you have 30 seconds.
I don't have a rebuttal, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Hogan?
No, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Ration?
I do, I have a short one. I think Dan and maybe one of the other Republicans mentioned that they were looking at places to cut that wouldn't affect the teachers. Every dollar in our budget touches the classroom, whether it's getting your kids to school on time, keeping facilities up to date, training and supporting the teachers, or looking for ways to improve the classroom resources, there's nothing in our budget that doesn't go to the bottom goal of teaching our students and delivering them a world-class education.
Thank you. Mr. Bennett?
No comment.
Mr. Alves?
Yeah, I mean, so I saw a, I saw a study that was done by a local New Canaanite, pretty involved in this, that basically just captured all the information from the town's website as well as information from the Connecticut Department of Education. And it looks like among our DRG, we actually do spend more money per student, it's not just a $100 million number, it's somewhere between $22,000 and $25,000 per student. Darien, Westport closer to $22,000. In fact, if, if you looked and reversed that math, you'd actually have to let go of, which no one's talking about doing at all, 87 teachers to match what we're spending per student with other towns in our DRG. So we, we need, I want us to be number one forever if we're going to be spending the most.
Ms. Willet.
I think, I'd like to fact-check that data because I think that we are the number one performing in our DRG, but we, there are six or seven districts that spend more per student.
Thank you. Ms. Lattick.
I'm sorry, I've lost track. Are we rebutting or?
Sorry, yes, 30 seconds to rebut.
30 seconds to rebut. I just echo Karen, I feel like it's another thing where everybody says one thing, but this one guy says one thing and now that's going to cause us to have to make all sorts of changes. I don't understand what those budget numbers are that that person was looking at and I'd be curious to see it.
Ms. Niang.
And to fact-check and agree with Karen, indeed, we are number one in, in results and number seven or number eight in spending. And also, the best way to balance the concern of our taxpayers is to not mess up with the property value by messing up with our schools. And we are investing in our kids and investing in the future and that's something that is paramount for the Board of Ed to keep focused on.
Thank you, Ms. Fonz.
Yes, our, our budget is extremely lean. I, I just don't understand how anyone can think that it's, it's overblown and our outcomes are, speak for themselves. I think we're doing a very good job.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Schwedel. Nothing. Okay, moving on to question four. Ms. Ration, you will start. Question four. New Canaan's Curriculum Leadership Council is made up of content and grade-level instruction experts and educators who continuously review and refine our curriculum. When district goals are updated or substantial changes are recommended by the state, the entire BOE is involved in discussion and feedback during CLC presentations and these BOE meetings are public. Do you believe that a member or members of the BOE should sit directly on one or more of the CLC subgroups? Please describe the benefits or the risks of this and from a process perspective, how it would or would not work. Wow.
All right. As I said before, I think our CLC is a model for other towns to follow. And no, I don't actually think a Board of Ed member should sit directly on the CLC. The CLC group works extremely well together, they dive into the nitty-gritty. If a Board of Ed member is there, I think it would actually chill what they do. They're, because when something's public, you always think about all the ramifications or what you say and how it could be misinterpreted, you might not talk about individual classrooms as much otherwise. So I think the CLC works really well in this town and we get an outstanding curriculum. You do not want those meetings to be open to the public. Some things are just better done by an expert group. We do want the curriculum to be open to the public and for everybody to know exactly what is being taught to their children. And that happens in New Canaan through all the sources that I talked about before, through the Schoology, through CSON Elementary, through Google Classrooms at Saks. If you have a question, talk to your teacher. If you don't like that answer, you can go up the chain and I know lots of parents who have. So I feel that I knew what my students were being, what my children were being taught. I think parents who've gone through the system know what their students are being taught and I think our test results and college admissions and scores show that we're doing a really good job and I don't think that we should change this process.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
So that's a great question, it kind of dovetails right to the clarification I had earlier. So to be clear, I think what we're advocating is to keep the CLC as the experts and the administrators that are going to draft curriculum. We want to create a curriculum committee that'll have a few members from that group in the administration as well as some board members on it to provide more periodic oversight. So no one wants parents on the CLC and no one wants board members on the CLC. Hopefully that is clear to everyone now. What I would say is I think that the CLC does an excellent job. They had a great presentation at the board meeting the other day. There are a lot of materials that are available online, curriculum-related, curriculum goals, and I find that all of the teachers that I've interacted with are very open. I think that what we're pushing for is more oversight, more balanced, thoughtful oversight at periodic stages. I think one of the concerns that parents have raised, and I agree with, is when curriculum comes through for board approval, it's already baked. Now, the board may have an opportunity to adjust some words, ask a few questions here or there, but I think what parents and we're advocating for is a more robust oversight process more frequently that doesn't derail all the excellent work that the CLC does, but that does give parents and community members more transparency, a better understanding, and the board to do their oversight job.
Thank you, Mr. Alves.
Yeah, it does seem like a similar question to one that we had answered before, so I'm going to save everybody a lot of time and say what he said. And move on.
Okay, Ms. Willet.
Yeah, so the Curriculum Leadership Council, I think, most people, it sounds like we all agree, should stay as it is because it does a very good job of doing a lot of different things. I would support a curriculum committee that's sort of, I guess we'll call it, like, sort of a middleman. It's mainly just because you want to eliminate some of this, this dialogue in the, in the community that might cause our teachers to feel like they're being suspicious, like people are suspicious of them. And I think that the administration would welcome that, they love talking about what they do. And I just, as a process person, I would want, you know, I can't really picture what it looks like at this point. So, you know, you have two BOE members and you have some of the administrators on that committee and they're supposed to be talking about things before they're baked, but, you know, that's kind of what they do on the CLC. So what does that exactly look like that they bring back? How much extra time is that taken away from all of the work that they do? So I just would want it to be a very clearly specified committee with clear objectives before we just sort of add it in. Thank you.
So I'm so happy to hear everybody say that because I feel so strongly that there should never be elected officials or just random parents sitting on the Curriculum Leadership Council and it was not always clear in this race where people stood. So that makes me feel much better.
that makes me feel much better. I would love to hear more about two things. One is transparency. I feel like the Republican slate talks a lot. They say it over and over again. And I'm still really confused by what it is they mean. Does it mean that you're going to, they want to manage individual lesson plans, or talk about what books are in the library? Or what does that look like exactly? That transparency, to me, happens, I mean, there was just on the 5th, there was a presentation on the health curriculum. And on October 28th, there's going to be a presentation on the elementary reading curriculum. And there are all these different ways that parents can be on their child's classroom, go and listen to the people who developed the curriculum and learn about what the goals are. And that, to me, is transparency. I'm never against parents knowing what kids are learning about. Or, you know, I would never want a parent to not feel comfortable calling somebody up and asking if they have concerns. And I lost my train of thought, so I'm going to end it there. But that's how I feel. No elected officials ever on the Curriculum Leadership Council, no.
Ms. Niang?
Yeah, I think during my podcast, I had made my position clear on the participation of parents, our public in the CLC. And Phil Hogan said it himself. He's an expert in his child. And he has an, he has an opinion about his child. He knows what his child needs. But he cannot speak for all the kids in our community. The expert that we have chosen to take care of that are looking at the common goal, not the individual goal. The school has been excellent at providing catered options to families that are in need. I have a few friends with special needs kids also. And Julie, I completely understand where you stand on that. But I think it's important to not lose sight of our role as how we best take care of the community beyond ourselves. And it's always, the door is always open to go to a counselor, to go to a teacher, to go up the chain if we have individual issues that need to be addressed to the school. And the school is more than happy to do that. So I think it's important to keep the CLC the way it is. And I'm so happy we finally all agree because in the beginning of your campaign, I wasn't quite sure where you stood on that. And also, what is important to me was you run on the curriculum and the transparency of the curriculum. The only day we have a presentation of the full CLC, you are not in the room. You may have watched it via YouTube, but that's the only day you need to be in the room.
Thank you, Ms. Fonz.
So I'm also glad that we're in agreement about this. The CLC has a lot of academic integrity. They're professionals in their field. We trust them to do their work. The thing that I'm confused about is the fear factor. And what is coming from Hartford? Or what is it that you think that is going to come into our classroom that our kids should be, or the parents and the kids should be afraid of? One thing that the CLC is very good at is crafting the curriculum according to New Canaan needs. Our administrators know our community extremely well. And I don't think there's any chance they would craft anything that's not appropriate for our community.
Thank you, Ms. Schwedel.
So I agree with not having parents on the CLC. I do want to give what I think is maybe some important context here, that a lot of these conversations around curriculum and concerns around curriculum have happened in the last year, let's say. And the board has been almost completely consumed with COVID during that time. And so what normally happens, and if you watch the Board of Ed, as I do and as some others do, over the course of years, that curriculum presentations happen regularly, and that you know what's happening in all aspects of the curriculum. Unfortunately, for the last year and a half, those meetings were almost, or those presentations were almost completely suspended. And so for younger parent, parents of younger kids, and possibly for even some of the other people up here, you just haven't seen it for long enough to realize that that is a normal part of the New Canaan Public Schools and the Board of Ed's process. And I would urge you to go back and look at old presentations and understand that curriculum is regularly presented to the Board of Ed. Questions are asked. Sometimes curriculum goes back to the CLC to be reworked over the course of time. And that normal process has served us very well.
Thank you, Ms. Toll.
Thank you. We don't want to manage lesson plans, and we do not want to manage the books in the library. Speaking to members of the community, they are asking for transparency. We have been overwhelmed with anonymous messages, with real-time examples of parents who have a concern about a certain lesson plan, or about a certain book their child is reading. And that's why we are running on transparency, because there are a lot of parents out there that have emailed us real-time examples of lesson plans and assignments that is concerning to them. Thank you.
Mr. Hogan?
Yeah, first, I'd say Fatu, I'm glad you were taking attendance at that BOE meeting. We were, in fact, watching online. But we were also being parents because I'm a young parent, Julie's a young parent, Hugo, Dan. We have, I think, between us, next year we'll have 11 or 12 kids in the public schools. So that's, that's a lot of skin in the game. And we don't all have the luxury of having two kids that are playing for the Kansas City Chiefs. And I think the other one's at Duke, if I remember the previous conversation you and I had. But just to sort of synopsize, keep the CLC as is, smart people, committed professionals, was very impressed with the presentation. Create the curriculum committee. The writing's on the wall there. Obviously, Dariane just did it. Our neighboring towns have it. It's kind of a no-brainer at this point. More oversight, like Dan said, at more steps of the way. And again, the BOE needs a voice before that cake is ultimately baked, because parents, like Julie was alluding to, are just telling us left and right that they, that they have concerns, and those concerns need to be addressed.
Okay. Rebutts, 30 seconds.
So I still think there's a lot of smoke out here. People say, I hear concerns, but nobody has ever presented a lesson plan to me that was a problem, so that I could look at as a board member. And I get concerned when I hear about a curriculum committee because I think that that could still do mischief, depending upon what your motives were. And when I hear people saying, like Dan did, that he wants to adjust words, I don't think that Board of Ed members should get into adjusting words. And I don't know what he's afraid of and what words that are being used at our school that he doesn't agree with. But I think that we need to trust the professionals and then look at the results and be happy with them, or talk to them about it.
Mr. Bennett?
Well, I, you should check in with the current Board of Education, because when they went through some of the district goals, they actually adjusted words. It was a healthy discussion around cultural humility. Some board members didn't like the language. They talked it back and forth, and they changed it to cultural understanding. I think that that on a more robust discussion is something that board members and community members want to have those conversations. Because a lot of community members don't understand all of the euphemisms that are used, and they want to delve deeper and understand exactly what is being taught to their children.
Thank you, Mr. Als.
I just wrote down a comment that I think Fatu made, and I just, I just want to clarify it, maybe during her rebuttals. Parents should not be involved in the education of their kids. I thought I heard that that's the opposite of how we feel. But maybe I was wrong.
Thank you, Ms. Willet.
Yeah, so I, so Dan just mentioned the word smithing at the district goals meeting last month. And I think that that is, first of all, it's not curriculum, it's district goals. And that goal is really, was written a year ago, and went through a process then and was approved. And now it's being revisited again for three straight meetings. And yes, they do have a discussion in the BOE meeting, the entire BOE, where they can wordsmith, disagree about things, and fix them. So I think that that is sort of a poster, like an example of how this process does work.
Thank you, Ms. Lattick.
Yeah, the wordsmithing of a Board of Education goal is really different than the wordsmithing of actual curriculum that's been written by professionals for our kids. And I guess my rebuttal is the same as my original point and not understanding. There's a sort of a lot of nonspecifics thrown out. There are anonymous parents complaining about things, but we don't know what any of those things are that they're complaining about. And we need to be more transparent. But we don't have any ideas or ways that we're telling you, we're actually going to be more transparent. It's just, again, I don't think there's a lot of substance there.
Ms. Niang?
And I would like to clarify two things. The first thing, Hugo, I've never seen that no parents should be involved in the education of the kids. The question was, should we have, should we have parents in the CLC? And my answer was no. Second, Dan, if you're telling me you were home watching, I wasn't taking attendance, but I think maybe you should be in the, in the room when you're running for Board of Ed, on a specific platform of the curriculum. I think it's important to be in the room in that, at that moment.
Ms. Fonz?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
It's a rebuttal.
A rebuttal. I just, I just simply don't understand why there's a question of curriculum transparency. It baffles me completely. I mean, there's, there's multiple avenues to find out answers to your question.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Schwedel?
I just want to say that I do take seriously the idea that individual parents could feel that there are situations where something's happened in school that they didn't agree with. And if that's the case, I would also want to, in addition to bringing that to the light, I would also want to understand if this is systematic, meaning like this is the curriculum going down to the teacher, saying it should be done this way, versus maybe we need a little bit more professional development to that teacher. And, you know, nobody is perfect, and that goes down to our teachers.
Thank you, Ms. Toll.
Penny, I appreciate that you're saying people can reach out to the Board of Ed. But the people that have reached out to us have asked to remain anonymous. The reason being is that there's a cancel culture. And we saw it this weekend in our headquarters. There were some teens that came in that wanted to make sure they weren't in any pictures because they were worried that they would be canceled by their friends, which is really sad. But that's, that's why some parents feel the need to remain anonymous. And that's why we want more transparency.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan.
Yeah, first, Fatu, you called me Dan. My name's actually Phil. No worries there. My worry is with, with cultural humility. I mean, think, think about that term. We're celebrating. We're talking about how great the process is. We're celebrating the fact that that term was taken out as a goal. Let me ask everyone another question. What on earth was that term doing anywhere near the New Canaan Public Schools?
Wow.
Wow.
Cultural humility?
Wow.
It's, it's my job as a parent to teach humility to my kids. It is not the school's job. That is my job as a father.
Okay, thank you. The last question, we'll go first to you, Mr. Als. The NCPS Charting Our Course website includes a detailed 62-page report of their handling of COVID-19 during the 2020-2021 school year, and a 14-page 2021-2022 Continuity of Services Plan. Which actions within the district's discretion, if any, would you change about the NCPS response to COVID-19 and why?
So first off, I, I remember where I was sitting when I heard Dr. Lutzey's voicemail that he left on that snow day. And I was like, we are just so lucky to have this guy. He's incredible. I think our administration did an amazing job. I think our board did an incredible job during the most challenging time in basically our lifetimes. What would I have changed? I'm not sure. I think the communication was actually incredible during that timeframe. I think that they worked really, really hard. I think that the biggest concerns that we've heard from the community up to this point, and I'm sure everybody's heard these, are really around when we're going to be able to become mask optional to some degree. And we don't know when that is at this point. You know, with the executive order from Lamont, it's at least not until February. And at that point, I would say we need to look at the data and make sure that our kids get to stay in school. We have a kids-first mentality and a kids-first approach, similar to our administration, our Board of Ed. But I don't know that I would have necessarily changed anything.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Willet?
Sure, I actually didn't prepare this question. Surprise one. I haven't read all of those pages. And Dr. Lutzey actually writes very long emails, but now he puts bullets at the bottoms for those who can't digest it all. They did an amazing job. I know how hard that was. I know how much they worked, not just to keep the kids in school, but also to make sure that kids were, you know, not, they were in school and thriving as well. And that's a really tough thing to do during a really difficult year. And I think they did a really good job of it. As far as masks go, you know, the governor does have it extended till February. I did find it concerning at the caucus that these candidates were all about the masks must come off. And, you know, I thought that that was, you know, a little bit critical of, of the answer, of the response that, that Dr. Lutzey had given up to that date, and sort of put some pressure on him and the district. If, if the governor had not, not done the mandate for, you know, it should be a health discussion, and it should be up to, I do think that New Canaan has great vaccination rates, and we are a small community. So once it is up to us, I think that there are many things that we can take into consideration about that.
Thank you, Ms. Lattick.
I agree with almost every, I agree with all of what Karen said. And I think that we all are really appreciative to the district for the ways that they handled this very confusing and unpredictable situation that we've had. I think that the goal has to always be to keep our kids in school and to keep them safe and in person and healthy. And that means listening to, you know, the health officials and trying to best interpret the science as we can, or at least listen to the scientists who are interpreting that science. I am very optimistic about New Canaan. We have a high vaccination rate. I think that things are really looking up. I'm cautious, though, because I felt that way at the beginning of the summer, too. And we all know that it can change really fast. So I think that it's hard to play Monday morning quarterback with what, what was done and to predict what should be done. Because if we've learned anything, it just changes constantly. So I think they've done an unbelievable job, though. And since I have 30 seconds more, I'll just add that I think we talk a lot about our kids. That's our focus. That's what's always number one. But what the district also was able to do was keep the teachers and the staff happy as well. We didn't lose a ton of our teachers. We didn't have people protesting coming back to school. People in general really came together as a community, and I think that's a testament to the partnerships that are in place.
Thank you, Ms. Niang.
I can only praise what was done by the school district and the flexibility with which they have reacted to a very hard situation that COVID has presented. And there is nothing I would change in the way they have operated, because it has kept our kids in class, in person. And maybe not the first few weeks because they had to transition to an online. But it had kept our school open the whole year, which cannot be said for a lot of districts or a lot of school, school districts in the country. So we have to continue to praise them for that. And to Jane's point, it also showed to us that despite the shortage of bus drivers around us, we did not have to resort to what Mrs. Schuster had to do by having to call the reserve guards for help. And that comes from the fact that we did take care very good, we did take very good care of our bus drivers, our teachers, and all that in the best of terms of our kids.
Thank you, Ms. Fonz.
Keeping the kids safe in school and in person was, should be always the objective when it comes to the COVID mitigation. And from what I understand, I, it was confusing what the Republicans were saying about masks optional, because that's not really consistent with keeping our kids in school. And that was very confusing to a lot of people, the position. And it was, it was very concerning to a lot of people as well. That said, going forward, I think there can be opportunities for looking at the data and whether or not we can take the masks off. Because we can all agree, kids do better when they're, when they're learning in person. So if the vaccination rates are high, and then infection rates are low, we should definitely consider taking the masks off.
Thank you, Ms. Schwedel.
I think that the administration did a fantastic job. Dr. Lutzey, the cabinet, but then going all the way down, you know, not only our teachers, I mean, our teachers were amazing during COVID, you know, having to manage both teaching our children and taking care of their own children during that time. Our nurses that were working around the clock, our custodians who were cleaning multiple times a day. I mean, everybody at all levels of our school's system stepped up and have worked so hard through this entire period. And I'm just grateful for all of them for being here. I think that going forward, we need to use the same overarching guidance we've used throughout this entire epidemic, which is what's best for our entire community, not what's best for one individual. It's taking care of everyone in our community.
Thank you, Ms. Toll.
Yes. I think we can all agree that Dr. Lutzey did an amazing job with COVID. He was ahead of the game getting us up with remote learning. I think we were at least a week ahead of Dariane with that. Right now, Governor Lamont's executive order is in place until February 15th. When that time comes, if he does lift his executive order... until February 15th. When that time comes, if he does lift his executive order, I think the board and administration should work with our local health officials and take into account our town data. After 20 months of masks, I'm worried about the mental health of our kids. There's a mental health crisis right now due to COVID, and we need to keep that in mind. Is the goal to get our kids out of masks? Absolutely. But we need to do it safely, and the decision will be made at a variety of levels. I also want to look forward to post-pandemic priorities. As I said, there's a mental health crisis in our country right now. First and foremost, we need to focus on the mental health of our children. We also need to focus on the loss of learning. And we have to develop strategies to close the gap on that loss of learning. Thank you.
Mr. Hogan.
Yeah, the one little thing I'll mention is half-day Wednesdays on a personal level, that was like soul-crushing to not have my kids get back in school until the end of the year. So I was gently nudging Dr. Lutzey and being like, is it going to happen? Is it going to happen? He was not giving me a concrete answer, but I mostly say that in jest. But the mask issue, like Julie was just talking about, that's sort of a sensitive one for me. You know, I don't know if people know, but my wife and I faced sort of a difficult decision last year when the Connecticut Department of Health mandated that masks be mandated for preschool kids. So our son Kyle, who had just turned four at the time, has a speech impediment, because he's a pathologist for it. So the idea of putting him, a kid with a communication issue, in a mask for five hours a day was, from our perspective, clearly the wrong move. Thankfully, our pediatrician agreed and gave him an exemption. But, you know, the law is what it is right now. Our hands are sort of tied. But I also know that a lot of parents in this town, including me, are sincerely worried about the potential long-term impact of masks on their children's development. I've spoken to a handful of pediatric psychologists, and unfortunately, they say my concerns are pretty well-founded. And again, we have young kids, you know, if it were older kids, and, you know, there's just, it's an inconvenience for older kids. It's, I think it may be something more for younger kids, and that's just a concern of mine.
Ms. Ration.
So I was so thrilled being on the Board of Ed to see the amazing job that Dr. Lutzey and the entire team did with the COVID crisis and how they really were ahead of the curve and ahead of a lot of other districts. And there are two things, two guiding principles that I really think helped Dr. Lutzey and his team as they set their path. One, they followed the science. And the second was they had incredible partnership with the teachers, between the administration and the teachers and the bus drivers and the custodial staff. And it was that partnership and that trust that let everybody move forward. The teachers and the custodians and the students all felt that they were safe when Dr. Lutzey said they could go back to school. And other districts did not have that. And they had protests from their teacher, and there was lost time and effort because of that. So I could not commend the administration more for what they did. With respect to masks, I think we're just going to have to follow the science on it. It's much better for our students to be in school than it is for them to be learning at home. We saw that in the spring of 2020, when we just had remote learning. And that was really hard for everyone at all levels, but particularly hardest for the elementaries. So we'll follow the science and we'll keep on. And hopefully, we're, you know, coming out of this pandemic and we'll just get back to business as normal. But I appreciate the support from the entire community in working with the Board of Education and the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
I think we all agree that the Board of Education, Penny included, the administration, Dr. Lutzey and his team, teachers, staff, as well as parents and students, did an excellent job in navigating COVID, in getting schools open, in prioritizing in-person learning, which is a big step up from remote learning, I can tell you. And we all agree that Lamont's executive order applies till February, and so this is not a decision for the board or for local communities until then. I hope that in February, it does become, his executive order expires, and then the board and the administration and health experts in town will basically have to do the work and determine with real data-driven analysis what is the right decisions. Ultimately, I think it's important that this does get to be a local decision and also gets to be a parent decision. I think it's important that we explore all of the impact on our kids' education. And we want our kids to be safe, but that includes everything. It includes their emotional well-being. It includes their development. It includes their education. It includes protecting them from all sickness. There are real concerns from parents about kids' emotional well-being, about their development on reading, verbal skill development, and certainly on the impact to some special needs kids. And I think a one-size-fits-all solution is not a good one. I think we can get to a point where there is enough data and there is enough support in the community from where everyone is to drive local decisions.
Thank you. Rebutts, Mr. Alves, you can go first.
I'm good, thanks.
Okay. Ms. Willett?
I'm okay, thank you.
Ms. Lattick?
Fine.
Ms. Niang?
I'm going to take the time, because I think by the time you got to me, I lost part of your question, which was the mask question. So if it's possible. I would like to say that regarding the masks, we not only have to follow the science, but also we have to follow the mandate. We cannot break the law by not following the mandate. In our community, we have immunocompromised kids, and we have kids that have special needs like the Hope, Phil, and Julie. And I think accommodation can be made to take care of those kids. But I think we also have to take care of the immunocompromised the same way we do for the peanut butter issues by not having it at school altogether. So we can think of something like that for masks.
Thank you, Ms. Fonz.
I was just going to agree with Erica and Fatu in that we're only as safe as our most vulnerable learners. So we need to keep a community-minded focus when we're dealing with COVID.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Willard?
Yes, I just wanted to say I agree with Julie on learning loss, and that I'm concerned about it. And I hope, I think the data is coming soon, and I want to know, you know, what the impact has been of COVID on our youngest learners. And I think that may be something that is the board, the next board, whoever's on the next board, is going to face. And I think that's really important.
Thank you, Ms. Toll.
Thank you.
Mr. Hogan.
Yeah, I just want to echo what Erica said. I think that's awesome that she said that, because I think learning loss is going to end up being a real thing, and we're going to have to quantify what that loss was, and we're going to have to really evaluate it and make sure that each and every New Canaan child is eventually brought back up to speed.
Okay. Ms. Ration, sorry. Just very briefly, you know, we are on the Board of Ed. We've asked for, and we're going to get shortly, the report on the assessments and how our students are doing and if there is any learning loss. And because we were so robust last year, I'm hopeful that the gaps, if any, are going to be small. But to the extent that we find them, we will look for them. The CLC will look in detail. We will make a plan and address them and get, you know, it's like no child, we have, can, you know, should suffer from it. We should come up with a plan and help everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
So all I would say is, you know, masks should not be on our kids for the next decade. So hopefully, the board and the community, at the appropriate time, on a data-driven basis, should have a thoughtful discussion on how we safely get back to normal for the sake of our kids' education.
Okay, thank you. Now we're going to go to closing statements. Each one of you will have a minute, and we begin with you, Ms. Lattick.
Okay. So I guess in closing, what I would like to say is that it's important to remember that this Board of Ed race is not normal in many, many ways. But maybe most importantly, in that the Board of Ed has lost a lot of years of experience through political upset and people moving out of New Canaan. And we're in a situation where we could end up with seven of the nine members of the Board of Education being brand new. And I always say this, and Penny hates it, but I feel like if you vote for anyone, please, 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 vote Penny back on the board, so that we have people who know, you know, have some institutional knowledge and some experience. Our slate offers consistency, leadership, and a lot of experience. We're well-informed on how our district works and have the knowledge and ability to make decisions that maintain excellence in our schools. We have had the same message our entire campaign. And I'm going to run out of time, so I can't go through my message. So you'll have to go to our website to find it. But I do humbly ask you to vote for Row A to protect our schools. Thanks.
Ms. Niang.
Thank you. I believe we are best prepared, better prepared to continue our legacy of excellence while evolving with our time. I care deeply about the health, safety, and well-being of each and every child, and believe that all part of what makes our community, that is all part of what makes our community welcoming, inclusive, and caring. The mental health issues that our kids have been dealing with is due to the social isolation than it is due to masks. To have well-rounded kids, we must take care of them intellectually, academically, and emotionally. The lack of diverse thinking is ultimately bad for the kids and put us at a disadvantage for the real work. I'm looking forward to bringing experience with fresh perspective to the Board of Ed, continue forward-thinking progress, and collaborative work with both the administration and all the other board members.
Thank you, Ms. Fonz.
Whoever controls the schools controls our children's future. We're running on a platform to protect and preserve our number-one school district. Our focus is on our kids and the partnerships that define our excellent schools. I've been in the school district for 15 years. If you are in the dark over what your child is learning, you're either not paying attention or you're not involved. These are, there are issues that need to be addressed, no doubt. But who better to address those issues than Row A, the parents who have been engaged and energized all along? We represent students K through 12, and we bring a diversity of fresh perspectives. We have the experience, but more importantly, we have the heart. Our commitment is recognized by 29 PTC presidents. We have differences of opinion, but at the end of the day, we can come together for the kids. We will continue to fight for your kids each and every day, because we believe in a better tomorrow.
Thank you, Ms. Willard.
Thank you again to the League of Women Voters for hosting us tonight. And I think it's clear from the discussion that all of us care a lot about the future and about New Canaan's kids. But I don't think that we're all equally prepared for this role. And so two things that I want to say about myself. My experience as a West School PTC president and my professional experience have shown my deep knowledge of our schools and of education. And I'm committed to bridging the partisan divide in New Canaan. And I want to go out of my way to listen to and engage all members of New Canaan's community on behalf of our kids, and I want everyone's voice to matter.
Thank you, Ms. Toll.
As a mom and a member of this community, I've enjoyed this process. I've enjoyed meeting and listening to many parents. I've learned a lot, and I'm more excited than ever to build on this energy and keep New Canaan schools the best in state. I've loved working with Phil, Dan, and Hugo. And I could work with anybody up here, and I would listen to you. I encourage people, if they have questions or need clarification, to reach out to us directly for answers. I, Julie Toll, respectfully ask for your vote for myself and all of Row B on November 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan.
Yeah, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this debate and the outgoing board members who have done a truly admirable job. I also want to thank the Democratic candidates who have stepped up and put themselves out there, because that's not an easy job to do. At the end of the day, I'm just a concerned, committed dad. I have absolutely no political aspirations beyond ensuring that my kids and all New Canaan kids get the best public school education this country has to offer, and that we continue to innovate to ensure that New Canaan schools remain best in class. And I think there are some elements of public school education that are in jeopardy right now, even here in New Canaan. And it's incumbent upon me to step out of my comfort zone, make my voice heard, and protect our schools. As much as I've loved some parts of this journey, it hasn't always been fun. At times, quite frankly, I wished it was someone else putting themselves out there. But I believe in my heart it needed to be done, and I still believe that. And for that reason, no matter what the outcome, I know it's been worth every ounce of effort. And I'm honored to have done it with three like-minded friends. We've appreciated the outpouring of support we've received along the way, and we humbly ask you to vote for Row B on November 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ration.
So I think the Democrats and the Republicans running this year have two very different views for how to move forward for the New Canaan schools, so it's a consequential election. Our opponents have less experience, but that's largely because they have younger children. Yet, they're glibly, in my opinion, calling for more transparency communication in other places, budget cuts. And they're advocating for a level of involvement in the nitty-gritty of the curriculum that I don't think is appropriate. I think it's the wrong path forward. Building a world-class school system like we have now is hard work, and it requires a collaborative partnership between the Board of Ed, the administration, parents, and teachers. And it has to be one that's based upon trust and respect, and it has to be one that requires constant innovation. So we're fortunate in New Canaan to have this system right now. We're at the top of the game, and we want to stay there. And for me and the other experienced Row A candidates, we are going to continue sailing this ship in the direction that we're going. And we hope that you'll support us in the election on November 2nd.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
So our platform has been consistent from day one. And it was supported when over 1,000 Republican voters came out in July to our caucus to support the four candidates and our platform. We were not handpicked by 23 people at the Democrat Town Committee. The platform is simple. Kids come first. Our children's academic achievement and social and emotional well-being are at the forefront of every decision the board must make. Engage oversight, including on curriculum, to ensure parents in the community have transparency and improved communication. Maintaining local control and decision-making for our schools. We want to keep bad policies from Hartford or elsewhere that don't fit our community out of our schools. The existing board has done a great job navigating COVID and keeping our schools open. We hope to build on that record of success with great energy, a focus on the kids, and a positive attitude. We want to work collaboratively with our excellent superintendent, faculty, and administrators to ensure all New Canaan kids continue to receive a best-in-class education. Thank you.
Mr. Alves.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters. Thanks to the candidates. Given what's been in the news last few weeks, wasn't quite sure how this was going to go. But I've had a lot of fun, and I think it's been really, really nice and respectful and somewhat light. And I think there's a lot of good information that they were able to provide. Look, I came here, my parents came here, my wife's parents came here for the American dream. I feel like New Canaan to us, I joke, I clawed my way into a lot of things, but this is the most fortunate that I've ever felt in my life in this town. And I want to do everything in my power to continue the excellence of our school system, because that is why we moved here. We moved here for the community. The community is built around the schools. I do think that I have a unique set of skills, given my volunteer work in DC and given my job as a financial advisor. I can't have judgment. I don't judge. I just help people become clear in their personal objectives and get them where they need to be as efficiently and effectively as possible. So as a community liaison, I feel that I'm uniquely prepared to work with the administration and the community for the best possible outcome for our kids.
Thank you. Ms. Willett?
So thank you again to the League of Women Voters for this chance. I hope that the public has learned a lot from this debate. I have a great deal of respect for those who have worked really hard to build this amazing school system that we have. People like Penny, Sheri West, Deanna Carlson, and many other long-serving board members that came before us. Academically, we are excellent, but we also strive to be a really nurturing place. I feel good every day about sending our kids to New Canaan schools. And I think I am really looking forward to building upon all of those successes, and particularly to improving our communications process and to make sure that no parent ever again feels unheard or uninformed about the New Canaan's schools and how the BOE operates. And so thank you very much.
Thank you all. It's been my pleasure, and I want to echo what was said earlier. Thank you for stepping up and serving the public for the greater good of your community. It's been terrific working with you. Thank you very much.
I want to thank the candidates as well, and I want to say to the audience at home, please, to learn more about these and all the candidates running, go to our Nonpartisan Voters Guide. The full version is online, l w v newcanon.org, or at vote411.org. You will all be receiving a short version in the mail shortly. Thank you very much for your courage and your effort, candidates, and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Well done.
Well done.
Glad to be done.[1458.51]